All right, so I'll continue on and I'm gonna ask Mr. Wall and Mr. Addy to come up. There's special education updates and it's positive, but we're gonna have Mr. Salee do it later in the agenda about transportation. It's the section that you asked for later, so we're gonna bring him up later, but we have positive developments there. Just letting the board know, you know, the district membership of MHSAA will be on the agenda next time. Right, Joanne?
Yeah.
For approval for the board, and I always alert you publicly prior. And as COVID numbers, I would say are, you know, they uptick a little, but they're, we're not overly concerned with the spike. We're still monitoring it, we're still implementing, and you know, people have the right to wear masks or not, and we are still, you know, doing what we need to with our nurses to make sure everyone's protected. And so that is really overall a positive. And then I think I have Mr. Wall and Mr. Addy to come up, but I just want to mention as they come up to talk about the Carehawk, I want to mention that, you know, since the shooting in Texas, and even prior to that, we had Oxford and others, the district has really been doing a lot of things, you know, drills and lockdowns are done all the time. And so I put out a communication to the community a few, couple of weeks ago when the shooting occurred, and it kind of listed a lot of the things that we're doing. And it includes stuff with our great social workers that support our students, we have safe boxes in the schools, and, you know, we have approved emergency management plans that go to the state for approval. And then we are in transition for the Carehawk system. Along with that, I will mention that Chief Shaheen has said that he will be providing more police presence around the schools for the rest of the year, just for that extra sense of security and protection for our students. So that was a real positive. In fact, I want to thank him. The very next morning, he called me at like 7:00 AM, and I was heading to Grand Rapids with the mayor for the Green School, and he called me very early to let me know that, you know, the police officers would be there to support. So we appreciate his support and all the officers. And then the Carehawk system is under, it's still not fully installed, but I'm gonna let these gentlemen do a quick update on where we're at with that, Mr. Wall.
Thank you, Dr. Maliko, members of the board. This has been a process for several years. We bid this out back in 19 and 20, and we actually did not get sufficient bids, so we went out and redid it again. We got us some additional bids. Unfortunately, this was happening right before the pandemic hit. So this project was put on hold for a while, and we were able to do some wiring in the interim in some of the buildings. But this process, when they actually brought it to the board, was a new process. Our old Duquesne system was end of life. We could no longer get parts for it, and it was really basically more of a TV slideshow than actually emergency system. So we put together an RFP and went out there and asked people, what kind of systems are out there that's gonna meet our specific criteria to address emergency needs? So that's how we got onto DAT data systems to actually be the vendor that we selected, knowing that they had a newer type model. So the first step, obviously, is actually them walking through the building, so that took a while. And then we actually started to the installation phase, we started at the elementaries and kind of working our way through. So this has been a long process due to the pandemic. We are just now finishing, our expectation is to have the system in place and ready to go by the end of summer, so the start of next school year will be in place. Now, I'm not gonna talk about the technology side, I'll let, you know, Mr. Addy deal with that one.
Ladies and gentlemen from the board, Dr. Maliko. So in terms of the technology side with the Carehawk Emergency Alert System, we've been working through a couple of various issues. The first of those being the supply chain issue, so we were delayed in getting some of the shipments that we were supposed to receive with clocks. And so this is why we have a redundant form of communication in place in buildings, using Google Chat, WhatsApp, and other various apps like that to be able to have redundant forms of communication, as well as some of the existing Duquesne system parts that have not been taken out of the buildings at this point. We also ran into an issue with programming with the Duquesne, or with the Carehawk system as well, too, where there was an issue with larger numbers of clocks being fully supported with the master clocks. And so what we found in some of our buildings was because of the larger number of clocks, they were not able to get out the message to the smaller numbers. And so we've worked through this with DAT, as well as with the Carehawk company, in order to resolve this by separating the VLANs. In doing so, we've tried the solution out already in one of the buildings and plan on implementing them in our larger buildings as well, too, which should resolve that. With volume issues, we do have classrooms that report to us, and so what we do is we work with the vendor to adjust the volume in the rooms that might have lower volume or higher volume like that, so that it meets the needs of the buildings. And so that's where we're at with those various component parts right now. We do have weekly meetings with Carehawk and DAT, discuss any concerns that we have, and look forward to, you know, brainstorming with them as we work forward with the solution.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Just a total pandemic question. I have a question, too. Maybe you're on the way.
So we've been getting incident reports throughout probably the last month, six weeks, about this system. How confident are you that this system is going to be functioning the way that we expected to once the work is complete?
That's a great question. So what we've also done, too, is we've worked with an outside consultant as well, too, to look at the solutions that have been proposed. So Delta is one of our outside consultants, and we've looked at with the VLAN solution, they're confident that this would be able to work with the current larger number of Carehawks that are in some of our high schools and middle schools. With my analysis, it seems to be functioning as it should. We've implemented the solution at one of the buildings already, and so far, so good with that. But we are monitoring the situation. I have Director Kennerberg here as well, too, who can also attest to this.
We feel very confident at Fortson where this solution has been implemented. Many of the issues that were present before are nonexistent right now. There is a small issue that affects probably about six classrooms in the upper A Hall, and that's because the switch is overloaded with the power. We're gonna adjust for that if it wasn't already done today. We're moving on to look at Etzel and Dearborn High receiving this fix before the end of the week, along with several of the middle schools that have a certain threshold of Carehawk units.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Trustee Mosib.
Yeah. How many buildings are we completely finished with this project? And are we anticipating a finish date for this contract to end?
So far, we have completed 17 buildings on the list. There are 16 that are in various stages of completion. So in some of those buildings, they've started with the wiring, some they have some of the Carehawks that are installed, so it's at various stages, some where they have yet to start the wiring and install the Carehawk. So our goal is to have this done by the end of summer for the start of the upcoming school year.
And do you think that we've learned from the incidents at Fortson what we can do to improve in the other schools, or is it Fortson is a unique situation because of its architecture?
So in looking at the situation with separating the VLANs...
You want to speak to that microphone?
Sure. In looking at the Fortson situation, specifically, Fortson is our largest building, and so with the number of Carehawks that were installed in the building there, that's why we saw kind of like the overload with the master clocks and the ones that report to them like that. So in separating the VLANs, like Director Kennerberg has said, we see success at this point. And so what we look at is you can also separate them into three VLANs if we find that the solution is not working like that. So we're going with two, because right now what we see is it should be able to support up to 128 Carehawks that are on there, and we're gonna implement that across the board. And then we will continue to go forward with that with each of the buildings that have over 128.
Trustee Petrikov.
Okay, I'm not asking this question to cast aspersions on the decision to go with the Carehawk program or anything, but when, and I understand that there's been a lot of moving parts that have made this a difficult process. But when the contractor vendor was selected, did they even come to our largest school building and take a look and say that they could competently install this without issues? Because now we're finding, I don't want to repeat these mistakes down the road for anything else that we may be considering. And we know that there's been a lot of stops and starts with this. And I have to assume that there are large facilities, say, office space, businesses, what have you, that must have some kind of systems in place as well. Did we go with a system that maybe was the least expensive because of the bid process? Or are we entrusting this company with the expertise that we would like to see when we pay for something?
As part of the RFP process, we required them to do a walk-through of our buildings back then, and I believe we also gave them an opportunity to, one of our switches, to make sure the communication was working. What I think they fell short on is that most schools don't have a size of Fortson, or, you know, to have the size, you know, of a larger high school. And I think what they were testing was in a controlled environment, and obviously, when you're talking about high schools, they're very large. And I think that kind of cut them off guard and had them slow the process. So we worked through that process, and as Mr. Addy said, and we've also given them notice, you know, on a legal side, to make sure that we're expecting this to be completed by summer. You know, no more if, ands, or buts, you gotta give us in writing your expectations and the completion of this process.
And what would be the, our legal redress if they can't?
Well, right now, it hasn't actually been in the legal side, it's more of the formal letter of acknowledgement of what you're gonna do to finish this on time and on budget. We do have one change order coming, because this is the size of our project, you're always gonna have additional rooms here, principal wants one more control panel here, so that will be coming to the board eventually. But at some point, we gotta bring this project to completion. And that's what we've started that process, to give them notice that they have to put it in writing, the expectations of getting this project done and completed. And even after it's done, as a district, we still might want to go through and test the system independently, just to make sure we're not missing anything.
Thank you.
But at this point, we have withheld payment to make sure that they're actually gonna complete the work that they're going to do.
Trustee Barry.
Thank you. I trust these two gentlemen here, and they said they're very, very confident things are gonna work out. And Trustee Petrikov went there a little bit, I'm gonna take a step further. Have you looked into the contract? Is there an out just in case?
Yes, they are required to have a performance bond for this size contract, so if it gets to a point where they can't complete what they expected to do and the timing of it, we can go against the bond and actually enforce that, and go out ourselves and finish it if we wanted to.
Can you explain what that means against the bond? I mean, how far are we into this?
So basically, every large project over $50,000 is required to have a performance bond, where they actually, you know, give us the insurance from outside vendor that they'll complete the project as required by the RFP. Now, this project is new, so it gets convoluted, but we'll get there.
Okay. Thank you.
Here, you want me to do her...
Yes.
She had to step away for a minute.
Next item, please.
Thank you.
Are we other?
I'm finished, thank you.
You're finished? Okay. Recognition and acknowledgements?
Yes.
Commendations?
Wait, did we, are you done with your report?
Yes.
Yeah, I just asked them.
There was a couple of the items.
He combined them.
Oh, you combined them?
I'm pushing one to the later.
Yeah, before we move forward.
Sure.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, no problem, no problem. I did say some of the comments earlier, but there's a couple of things I wanted to get to. I put something out there a few days ago. If I have seen further, it is by standing on the shoulders of giants, Isaac Newen, and some of my colleagues probably thinking, what's going on with him? But it'll be a little bit more clear, and you should have took me out for that birthday lunch, because I have a lot to say, so take that battery out of that gavel. Yeah, before, there was the Dearborn Public School Board of Education, there was Fortson Board of Education, there's Springwell's Board of Education, so we do stand on others' shoulders, and the respect has to stay at this table. The respect has to stay at this table. Mary, Trustee Petrikov, I'm sorry, Trustee Petrikov, a few weeks ago, we were at a parade, and I said, hold that thought. An employee was talking to me and you were standing there, and I realized that she didn't recognize you, didn't know you, and I made the introduction, I said, hold that thought. That happens a lot more. I, you know, I'm out there in the community, I, you know, you know what I do for a living, I don't have to advertise it. I'm out there, I see a lot of people. There was, there was two graduations just recently on the other side of Michigan Avenue, where after the first graduation, somebody came up to me and said, who was I sitting next to you in the wheelchair? Is that one of the students that couldn't walk up there? I said, no, that's my boss this year. That's Roxanne McDonald, that's Chair Roxanne McDonald, okay? She was not recognized at that meeting, at that graduation. The following graduation, trustee Dian Brilzio was sitting next to me, and I got the same question. Who was, is he a professor or something like that? The respect has to stay on the table. We cannot let others disrespect us. Going back to Fortson, they just celebrated the 100-year anniversary. I just received a cup from the principal, I thank you very much. But this is a question for you, Dr. Maliko. I know it was a, it was a committee from the community that put this together and planned this, and they did an amazing job. But my question to you is, when you first saw the program, did you realize that there was no, there was no board members on that program?
Yeah, I actually didn't get the program, I was just asked to go and speak at a certain point, so I really wasn't involved at all, including with the program.
I did, I did ask, I did ask two superintendents, one from Oakland County, one from Northwest Wayne County. Something that big happens, wouldn't somebody from the board be present? So what happened was, one of my colleagues went up there. That night, as soon as the people got in, started getting together, I think I started getting text messages about the program. Hey, how come so-and-so's not speaking? Why isn't, why isn't anybody speaking? I did approach my president a week later, and the look on her face broke my heart. They said, were you asked to speak at the Fortson reunion? And your response was, no, you weren't. And the look on your face was very, very frustrating. So there was somebody there that said, hey, this is not right. In the absence of the president, maybe I should do something. Was it the wrong thing, the right thing? There was a veteran, there was a couple of veteran board members there, should he have approached them to discuss? And that created a little friction between us. Again, not our fault, it came from other people's decisions. We need to keep working together. I had a long, I value my colleagues, each and every one of you. I had a long sentence here that I wanted to go over on each one of you right here, but I'll just summarize it. Jim, when you and I did in 2020, I thought I was helping you, you were actually helping me. I was president and you were vice president. I said, hey, let's work together, and Dr. Maliko gave us accolades on that team, on that, you know, on that team. That year, what we did was just amazing. Maybe we can save the district some money, and Jim and I can lead that team-building session. I'm glad people are laughing, because we need to kind of break the ice here. Mary, what you do in the community, I really appreciate you. What you did in the community before you coming onto this board doesn't go unnoticed. Everywhere I go, people remember what you did at the different commissions at the city, so I personally appreciate you. We can't sit here just in January and say, it's board, school board appreciation, didn't get a certificate, move on, we need to continue doing this. Irene, what could I say? What do I start? Honest to God, where do I start? Teachers should know this, it doesn't go out there. Teachers should know this. My first year back on the board, I was saw teacher after teacher after teacher after teacher resign unwillingly. There was a, there was a letter that went out to the teachers, sort of questionable. Trustee Thorpe stepped up and said, hey, this is foul play, this needs to stop, kind of changed a little bit, then we went back to it. We had, we had, we had a doctor of education retire unwillingly. We had one of the best, not one, two teachers out of Bryant, two teachers, I think combined service of over 50-some years leave. They weren't happy to leave. At one meeting, five words, five words, you changed that discussion. Just before, we were talking about the summer school program, and what you said kind of shifted things, and here we are right now. We're celebrating teachers, we're compensating teachers, so that's very important to me, I appreciate you for doing that. Roxanne, what could I say? We say student-first, that's your life, student-first. Every time that something comes out of your mouth, I think of student-first. Pat's here getting a little nervous, he's, what's gonna you say about me? You know what? You're a very caring person, you bring your heart to every meeting, to every decision you make, and I value that. You're a veteran mom, and, you know, a lot of work we do at the college, you step up to the plate, so thank you very much, I appreciate you for that. Adel, your intent is great. Your intent is amazing. I know you, so I know what directions you're going, you need to get us on board with the direction you're going. Don't take that as a negative thing, that's, I mean that. You do some amazing things when you represent the students, when you talk to students, when, you know, I thought everybody knows me, but when I go to like a graduation or honor night, I'm like, hey, guys, what about me? Because the students know Adel, he's been with them most of their lives. Pat, when I first got on the board here, 20, almost 12 years ago, there was a name-by-name of Kevin. I'll call him Kevin because that's his name. My name came up at a meeting and they said, that Hussein Barry doesn't say much. Now, Kevin didn't tell me this, but one of his, somebody that was sitting at a meeting said, yeah, but when he does, you should pay attention. So there was a discussion here that was supposed to take weeks, maybe months, to get to, and there was, there was people speaking for five minutes, six minutes, I had a lot to say that night, and again, four or five words spoke volumes, and you just shut that discussion down, and you know, you know exactly what I'm talking about. I also want to thank you. There was two students from Dearborn High, I never got a chance to thank you for this publicly. There was two students from Dearborn High, by mistake, I'll keep it clean, were asked to leave Dearborn High on a Friday. They sent the email to yourself, Roxanne, and Dr. Maliko, I'm sorry, President McDonald and Dr. Maliko. And Tuesday, one of the students was back in school. Then two days later, his sister was back in school. This stuff goes unnoticed. You don't have to sit here and talk for hours and hours and hours like I'm doing, and everybody's getting mad at me right now, wasn't he gonna shut up? But, you know what? Thank you for doing that, because if you didn't, and by the way, by the way, those two students didn't look like my friend here, they look like me, so I appreciate that, thank you. Thank you.
I just want to...
Back to, back to Fortson, Henry Ford, slowly here, whatever, they see the board maybe a little bit divided, a little bit disrespected. Now, we got employees sending us email, naming, naming a trustee by name, that they're unhappy with them. Really? That's what you want to do? I've asked a couple of questions of Dr. Maliko, he's giving me some answers, but we'll get to this letter eventually, but do not let anybody come between us. What we do is very, very important. Dr. Maliko and I, and Jim and I spoke about this, sometimes we're on the phone for a long time. There's some things that we can't disclose to the public, we can't disclose to a significant other. If we don't bounce these ideas off each other, invent a little bit, then who do we talk to? We can't, we can't break any laws. I get the calls like Trustee Petrikov and Adel, everybody, Trustee Mosib, that, what can you tell me about this so-and-so situation? I'm like, wow, you're telling me more than I know. They think we're lying to them, but that's the truth. So please, please, the respect for this board needs to stay on the table, and it's upon us, all seven of us, to keep it that way. Thank you, thank you for allowing me to speak.
I absolutely agree, I absolutely agree.
I just want to follow up just quickly. I, ever since I joined this board, I've been surrounded by so many phenomenal board members. I know trustee Lane is in attendance, and, yeah, we did not see, she's still here?
Yep.
We did not see eye to eye in some areas, but we bonded together right after the appointment. So I appreciate all of you, I appreciate your wisdom and your guidance, especially you trustee McDonald, and also trustee Petrikov, when I came as a newest appointee, and then I had to run an election to be, to be joining you for the next six years. A lot of people tell me this job is very difficult, it is, it is very stressful. We oversee not only this institution, but also the other one on Evergreen, and it's very important that we commit the time and resources, and sometimes special time. So thank you to all of you.
Okay, I'd like to move it along a little bit, we're running late on time, we still have a ton of blue cards to get to, so thank you for your comments, I couldn't agree more that the board needs to be united and we need to work together. Disagreements are wonderful, it helps us grow, but we do, we are a team, and we need to be able to trust each other and be a team. Go ahead, next item, please.
Commendations.
Commendations. Good evening, President Roxanne McDonald, trustees, Superintendent Maliko. I have this young, fine young man with me here over here, Malik Salam, we're here for the Ice Cream Social, and he's gonna read off the commendations. He's a little bit nervous, he might pronounce some, some names, but I told him he's gonna be great. Magnet.
Good evening. Commendation to the seven seniors who earned medical certificates through the Michael Berry Career Center. Ali Yasin of Dearborn High earned his certified pharmacy technician. Those earning their certified clinical medical assistance include Riam El-Duas, Norm Mazloom, Laura Nasreddin, and Zara Archie, all from Fortson High. Sajdan Al-Halfi from Dearborn High, and Sarah Mushid from Etzel Ford High. Congratulations to the 21 graduating seniors who received scholarships from the Rotary Rotary Club of Dearborn. Scholarships range from 2,500 to 9,500. Olivia Sherman of Dearborn High received the 9,500 Harry Sizan Scholarship. Glenn Warren and Malak Elian, both of Dearborn High, received the Hugh Archery Scholarships. Receiving the past president's scholarships are Mohammed Al-Hamid and Asma Eidi from Fortson, and Hilal Baydoun and Ahmed Kayad, both at Etzel Ford. All four students are also dual-enrolled at Henry Ford College. Commendations to the 14 students who received the Otto Rowan Scholarship from the Rotary. Commendations to the Fortson and Etzel Ford High School Key Clubs and Fortson Club Advisor Zainab Sarif, who received recognition at the recent Kiwanis State Convention. Miss Sarif received the Outstanding Faculty Advisor Award for the third time at the convention. Of 21 awards for students, Fortson was awarded eight, and Etzel received four. The Fortson, Etzel, and Dearborn High Key Club are all sponsored by Dearborn Kiwanis Club. Commendations to DC MST and Dearborn High student Zain Mohammed. He received a letter from Governor Whitmore, recognizing him as an outstanding Michigan student. Commendations to Fortson Band Orchestra and Choir, and the Woodworth Orchestra for hosting fifth grade students from Becker, William Ford, Miller, Oakman, and McDonald's Elementary Schools at Fortson High School. The visit was designed to share with the fifth graders all from all of different music classes that are available to them in middle and high school. The students were also treated to an exciting musical performance. Special thanks to Fortson music teacher Dan Taylor and his fellow music teachers for organizing the event. Commendations to the district students on Dearborn United Figure Skating Team for the club's team's successful season. Commendations to Woodworth Boys and Brian Girls Soccer Team for winning their district titles. This was the first year the district offered interm, soccer in the middle schools. Commendations to Arav Karavi, who represented Dearborn Public Schools' virtual K-12 and National Elementary Championship held in Columbus, Ohio. Arav won the national title for the K-3 U-700 category, winning all seven games. Commendations to Stephanie Stover, early childcare program supervisor, who assisted at Long Elementary's theme literacy night. Commendations to Chris Maceroll of Henry Ford Elementary. Miss Maceroll organized the school-wide Battle of the Books to encourage students to get reading. More than 100 students participated. Through Miss Maceroll's works selecting donations, each participant received a new book and many won additional prizes. Thank you.
Well done.
By the way, I'm Mr. Baydoun, Osama Baydoun, Assistant Principal of Dearborn High's campus, and this is Malik Salam from Magnet, did a phenomenal job, thank you guys so much.
Yes, you did. You're gonna take up public speaking now, correct, Malik?
Amazing pronunciation of names.
Next item, please.
Acknowledgement of donations.
Dr. Choco.
Dr. Choco, please.
While we wait for Dr. Choco, I just want to say, congratulations to Olivia, I think I spoke with her... I think I spoke with her and her mother. Phenomenal job to be a state champ for a club that we have in our schools for figure skating. So congratulations, Olivia, and to your family.
Thank you, trustee Mosip. Can I please remind you to wait until I?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
It was very quick, thank you.
Donations. A donation of $444.22 has been offered to Becker Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for English language learners. A donation of $700 has been offered to Salina Elementary School by Communities and Schools of Michigan to be used for bounce houses during the field day celebration. A donation of $2,500 has been offered to Salina Elementary School by Access Youth and Education to be used for office and classroom supplies. A donation totaling $4,700 has been offered to Salina Intermediate School by Mr. Maori from CRSD to be used for PBIS student incentives and awards. Monies were received from March through May. A donation of a field trip was offered to Salina Elementary School by Communities and Schools of Michigan to be used for busing and admission for all students, staff, and chaperones to the Detroit Zoo. A donation of $158 has been offered to Snow Elementary School by donors choose to be used for wiggle seats and fidget tools for Ms. Mullier's classroom. Thank you.
I know, well, let's see, next item, please.
Approval of minutes. Approval of minutes of the following Dearborn Board of Education meeting. Regular P-12 meeting, May 9, 2022, Board Report 21 hyphen 123. Executive session, closed superintendent performance, May 9, 2022, Board Report 21 hyphen 124. Superintendent Devaluation Committee meeting, May 17, 2022, Board Report 21 hyphen 125. Recommended action, make any necessary corrections and move approval of these minutes.
So moved, seconded.
Okay, it was moved by trustee Barry, seconded by trustee Di Ambrosio, are there any corrections?
Yeah, I have one correction. And it's not, I'm sorry, it's not a correction, it's just one addition.
Okay.
So it's very important to that the record reflects.
I'm sorry, it's a what?
It's a, it says, I, that I said something at the meeting and it was not noted.
Is it on the regular minutes though?
Regular minutes, yeah. So it's toward the discussion we were talking about, I am willing to pay for more taxes for newer schools. I have that here. Yeah. This is on the potential bond, sorry. It's on the regular meeting.
Can you give Joanne a page number, please?
Uh, 27. Paragraph where it says trustee Mosip said, it is important that we invest in our schools. And I'd just like to mention that I said something that I don't read here. And what I said is that people are hurting. That, because I, my words were miscreant, they were taken out of context. And people were selling this like I own a big house and a mansion and cars and I don't care for the everyday people. So that I was really offended by that, that people are that. I don't know how is it taken, but I want just to make sure that the record is clear. And my words were very, and thank you for Joanne, and it just, I just read this right now, and it's very important that we reflect that. So I'd like to go back to the tape perhaps, but it's to say word by word, and I think it's three sentences that I mentioned. People, but, I said the word but, people are hurting. There are a lot of taxes, and they paid for a lot of taxes, and I mentioned the case of my uncle paying or trying to buy a house in Dearborn, and he can't afford it. So I'd like that to be in the record, please.
Okay, are there any others? Hearing none, may I have a roll call for approval of minutes?
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Di Ambrosio?
Yes.
Trustee Mosip?
Yes.
Trustee Petrichov?
Yes.
Trustee Thorpe?
Yes.
Trustee Watts, yes? President McDonald?
Yes. Okay.
Could we go back? I'm sorry, I had to use the restroom, but I came in on the conversation about the Fortson speech. And I think it's important that we recognize that there is a hierarchy. And I think that we also need to recognize that we have other trustees that are there in attendance that we communicate. I think that's part of it, is the communication portion. So I may have missed that?
Yeah, I did say that.
Okay.
I didn't mention names, but I said there was two other veterans.
I just wanted to make sure I wasn't quite sure.
There should have been a discussion, I think the superintendent should have stepped in and had a discussion and.
But I think before somebody steps into that role, if there are other trustees.
Hundred percent correct there, yeah, we're good there.
I'm over communicating.
I just, my point was, maybe it's not a big deal, but that's how friction starts between you and I.
I personally was not offended that we weren't on the stage.
Yeah.
But I think when I saw that somebody else was representing, I think that's where.
I was offended that our president was not asked to speak. I was very offended by that, just for the record.
Okay. I think more communication.
Thank you.
I think we can agree on that, right?
Can I, can I add something?
Okay, quickly.
Yeah, I just want to say it's the office of the trustee. It doesn't matter if it was myself, obviously, because everyone is talking about me, so might as well just get the genie out of the bottle. But it's the, it's the respect for the office of trustee, thank you.
No, I just want to.
Special reports?
Um, yes.
Mr. Meshure is going to, President McDonald wanted Mr. Meshure to come up and provide a little update on athletics and situation at Etzel Ford Coaching.
I think there's a lot of people in the room that are concerned about some things that have gone on with athletic and coaching. So I think we have some updated information that I would like to put out there. Mr. Meshure, there he is.
I didn't know if you were going to call me personally or not. Good evening, everyone. My name's Abe Meshure, Director of Student Services and District Athletics. First of all, I just wanted to take a quick moment to thank the Exchange Club for everything that they do. I know they were here presenting scholarships, but they do so much more for all of our, the kids in our community. Whenever we have house fires or anything, we have, we're blessed, we're very, very blessed in this community to have a lot of organizations that reach out to us. The Exchange Club is always there to help us with anything that we need. With regard to the Etzel Ford basketball coaching position, I met with Coach Baydoun today. We had an excellent meeting, to say the least. Later this week, Coach and I will be meeting with our Athletic Director Chuck Silver and Principal Mrs. Rima Hassan to determine what we need to do in the best interest of Etzel Ford Basketball. My apologies that our meeting last week was perceived negatively and was looked at negatively in a lot of ways. That, I'll take ownership for that, that's not a problem. It's definitely not our intention, I can assure everyone that. And I'm not here to discuss details or conversations that have been had, you know, since last week, Thursday. I will just simply tell everybody with regards to our positions, as far as coaching positions go, generally speaking, we open all the positions every year based on our interest, based on the interest in the positions and so on at each school. Then we determine whether we're going to have interviews or not and go from there. But just to, for the sake of time and for everybody that's, I'm sure, chomping at the bit to say what they need to say about different things, I think we're in a good place where we, where with regard to the coaching position at Etzel Ford, and we'll go from there. Anybody have any questions, I'll answer them.
Just one quick, it's in the contract, every year, the principals do have to post every extracurricular. It's part of the contract, and it goes every year.
Right, so depending, and some people have asked, well, why are you, why are you interviewing for this and not interviewing for that? It depends on interest. If we have nobody that's interested, then obviously the interview's a moot point. If we have quite a few people who are interested, then sometimes we elect to interview everybody.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Have a nice evening.